Six thirty.
You want to take it?
Sure. Follow the meeting to order at six thirty PM Tuesday, December 3rd. I'll just include the agenda. All those in favor of approving the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I didn't print the minutes, I forgot those. If you want to put those off till next time, we can do that.
Uh, probably should do that, right?
Yeah.
We'll, uh, yeah.
Table?
Table that for the next meeting, approval of meeting minutes. Select board member concerns.
I don't have any right now, I mean, everything's here.
Neither do I.
Wow.
We're cruising.
Citizen input, anybody?
Do you want to have any input?
There we go, alright. So we're on to local emergency management plan adoption.
Yeah, we have, this is, uh, for, uh, our Vermont Emergency Management requirements, we have to fill out a form. Basically, it's identifying all of the locations for our emergency program when, like, an event like an Irene happens. Who the personnel are, who are responsible, what resources are available, like, from contractors and things like that. Um, it's basically just a renewal, there's no major changes, we just updated the names. But it does require a signature of a select board member, and I would assume a motion to, to move forward with that.
Make a motion that the, that, uh, here can sign for the emergency management.
Just sign the bottom one, the bottom section, they're all the same.
So, you have any discussion on this?
Does this stay, like, where? There's additional, there's an attached sheet that's here that look talks about, like, who the contractors are, other local resources, businesses, like, our generator service and things of that nature.
Does it mention that the elementary school, that's all I really care about, where or whatever, does it have to have that?
It's a seven-page document.
But somewhere in there it says that, right?
That's, that's our shelter.
Okay, and then we have that in our deed that we still can.
Yeah, we have an easement that allows us to use the facility for all of our rec events that we've been doing in the past and for our emergency shelter.
So the town clerk sees the, the ballot coming up in March, just make sure the articles of agreement that we're voting on, that I think Article twenty-two or twenty-three is still in there, which states that we're voting on giving those rights. Bonner's having a vote this week, and somehow that did not get in, so we're going to make sure it's in for the March vote for everyone.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm all good, they know what they're doing.
Okay, all those in favor of adopting the local emergency management plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number seven, budget review.
Well, basically, from a budget perspective, there are no changes to the budget we talked about the last time. What I, what we really wanted to do this time was, I want, we had talked about the, uh, the probable tax implications for this year's budget, um, and wanted to look beyond to the next couple of years to see how compared what, what our plan was. When we did last year's proposal, um, that talked about what our taxes, our tax rate would be going forward, um, if you looked at, we paid, last year the tax for the town was point four-six-six-five, um, and what we had expected for this year was point four-nine-three-five, and if include, and then when you include the million dollars for the, the road repair, it was going to go to point five-zero-nine-two. Um, but what we were able to do is get the budget so far into, in line with, um, the budget. Last year it didn't include the million dollars, but including the million dollar payment, it's at point four-nine-five-two, which is about two point seven or eight cents, which is about exactly what we had expected it to be. Um, and, you know, we can, I can put the, the rest of the numbers together, but it's point four-nine-five-two, that includes a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in payment for the one million dollar bond. We also did not assume we were going to be making that payment this year because we were going to do the bond issue later, so that includes doing the bond payment a year ahead of what we were expecting last year. Um, comparing where we were last year to this year, point four-six-six-five to point four-seven-four-nine, so it's basically only a one cent increase apples to apples, and then when you add the million dollars in, is where we end up with that other.
Just, what is the million dollars again?
The million dollars is the road bond and the, and the, and the, um...
For which roads?
It was East Mountain Road and Dean Hill Road, and then it also includes the five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the bridges, those two bonds together.
Which also includes, this is all based on that we're paying back FEMA?
Hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars, and our tax rate is, what is it, ninety cents, is a, is a penny?
Eighty-five-ish, eighty, eighty-five.
So penny and a half of this is...
Is just that.
Basically that money that we have to pay back to the feds.
Correct.
So I, there's numbers all over the place here for me, so it looks like there's...
Yeah, I would, I would, if you...
We're looking at FY, we're looking at FY twenty-one, correct?
Correct, and when you go down to the blue line, that is the total of all pieces.
Right.
Um, the point four-nine-five-two.
And what were we projecting when we started talking last year?
Point five-oh-nine-two, when you include all the projects that we did.
Okay, so we're less, we're a penny less.
We're, we're less, and that includes having the additional money for the, the paying the hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and includes the capital money that we're putting towards the golf course.
Okay, and then that brings in that loan, that bond one year earlier.
Correct.
So, let's go out just for kicks to two thousand twenty-four. What were we projecting then?
Last year, we were projecting, twenty-two-four was projected at including everything. That was five-nine.
Fifty-nine cents?
Yep.
So we're projecting now six cents less than that?
That is correct.
Okay, and then just give me enough, just so we know what we're doing, and I could put this in my folder, whatever, twenty-nine? FY twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine last year was point five-zero-zero-one.
So that's up a little bit.
That's up two cents from there.
Yeah, okay.
Point five-three.
Alright, but we're going way out, so we don't really...
Well, and that, and that assumes that, that whole thing is based on only a one percent increase in operations, um, on an annual basis, just from inflation, one percent increase, and then, um...
I'm not worried about that, I, I went out so many years there, so...
Right, it's just a matter of, it was just to say, do we have any blips in there, we're trying to stay relatively in that same flat range.
We're in the ballpark, that's all we wanted to say. You're still holding to the...
And we, and we basically not only hit, but probably, even though it's still a couple, like, two point seven cents or whatever, we still hit, actually beat what we had anticipated for this year from last year.
And why are we bringing this a year early?
Because we're doing the bond issue six months earlier.
The bank wants their money.
Because we don't want to carry over the, the, uh, the liability of a bond anticipation over the end of the fiscal year, because it makes us look like we're four and a half million in the hole, from a finance perspective.
We needed the money, we did the job, we needed the money.
Right.
Now, this includes in here what we were talking about last meeting. Um, the golf course is now back into this budget, the general fund?
It is from a capital perspective.
Right, okay, and...
You will notice that number is...
I see golf.
If you go to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, under capital budget appropriations, it goes from one-three-oh-five in our current year to one-five-oh-oh, which included the hundred and seventy-five thousand for the golf for this year.
Okay, and that's where we're at, so we're still putting in the seventy-two thousand dollars for the courts.
Correct, and I've already told them to take their, it out of theirs, which we'll be going over at the next meeting.
So if people in the audience, you know, the golf course is doing better, it's paying its, most of its operating costs, but we're still putting, now we're, we're, we're realizing what we have to do, so we're putting a hundred and seventy-two thousand, a hundred and seventy-five?
One-seventy-five.
One-seventy-five of general fund money into take care of some capital needs over there, so. I mean, we're kind of switched over to taking it on, just like we have with a swimming pool, a tennis court, a fire department, you know, we, we have to do this stuff, otherwise. Um, so I just want to be clear on that.
And, and just so everyone knows, just from a, a reporting perspective, um, the golf course year-end technically ends on the calendar year December thirty-one. This year it's going, that, then, that will end on that year, but their audited thing will not happen till June thirtieth, because it's going to get the additional six month, it's going to be an eighteen month. Um, so we'll, it'll be back on the same calendar with the ga, with the town, um, and it will be, it'll operate, even though it'll always be accounted for separately, it will operate as a, in our financials as more of a department than it is, which is the way it was prior to two thousand fifteen.
So you'll start seeing the golf course back into the budget and, uh, and, and the town book when it comes to March. We weren't getting all the numbers into the budget the last few years, it was on its own separate pages.
Well, it'll still be on its separate page, because it's still going to be accounted for separately, but the reports, the capital is now included. Well, will show up in there, so the capital item will be in the town's budget, but the operations will still be a separate little section. Because we're trying to, we want to just be able to track it, so we, it's comparable, and that we can manit, we can review what the management company's doing and all of that.
I mean, you know, we don't need to vote on this anyway now, so...
No, the, the goal was to say, is there any comment, anything, oh, one, I am going to reduce the budget by somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, and that was because we had talked about doing two line striping
Right.
plans next year, and I've been talking to multiple people, and the, uh, the indented line striping typically lasts a lot longer, and we're going to do that experiment this year, so we will, we will not have to pay more, um, upfront, but we're gonna, we're gonna experiment and see how much better it does with that. So in the process of trying to get quotes, actually, I should have a quote the next week or so, so then I'll be able to update it, but that would become part of the paving project budget.
Even those things there, I mean, once, I think a lot of people didn't know what side of the road to be on. Uh, but when you start crossing over, you're going to feel that.
Yeah, you'll still, actually, it'll, it's like a mini, um...
Rumble strip.
Rumble strip, I mean, it has, you do feel it when you're going over it, um, and it does, what it does is it keeps the plows from wiping on it after the salts hit it. Um, so you, you don't get that rubbing and getting it cleaned right off the paving, so the hope is, and it, and it typically lasts much better, we're gonna, we're gonna do an experiment this year and see how it goes.
Have it all along with four.
Correct.
This is just on the expense side, right?
Yes. And from a revenue perspective, you, you would note that, um, in your, if you look in this section here, the non-property tax revenue goes from eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand to nine-hundred-and-fifty-six, and that's primarily due to both the twenty thousand dollars that we are going to get from the school district for the, uh, rec director slash after-school program. Um, the, we've been averaging about thirty thousand dollars more in the, the local and state funding. So those numbers are adjusted to actual, so we, we did increase the non-property tax revenue by that much.
So if anybody looks in the, in the town report coming up in February or whatever, and starts looking at the rec director salary, and sees a, a, a jump of something like twenty thousand dollars or whatever, just, just remember, what we've done here is, is we've taken the full-time position, and we are now subbing that person out over to the elementary school for their after-school program, and we're being reimbursed for that money, so it's not that big a, we're still paying what we were paying, and we're getting reimbursed the balance from, from the elementary school.
It actually is a line item in the recreation revenue section. Where'd it go? I'm not far enough up yet.
Yeah.
Revenue, recreation director, twenty thousand dollars, it's in the wrong line item, but there it is, right there. Is a revenue item, so that offsets the, the increase in the salary. And the same thing applies in the police department, there's a five thousand dollar increase, um, for, uh, DUI things that we do, and that's, we do that along with the state, but we get reimbursed all that money, so we have the expense part of it, and we get reimbursed, so there's a five thousand dollar expense and a five thousand dollar revenue to offset it. So it's just making, being much, we're able to track it much better this way. But it isn't in and out, we get, we get the bill, we submit what the actual cost is, and then we get reimbursed.
And the school's paying us monthly correctly, which are set up?
Yes, we, we're, we're, we're supposed to be getting our first payment in the last couple of weeks, but, so I haven't seen it yet, so. But we didn't actually do it until she came back from vacation, um, so we sent that in.
I'm good on the expense side. You know, I, I, like I had said, on the revenue side, the only thing that I see, um, that I really want us to look into is, is that, you know, when I look on the town website, and I look underneath the, um, garbage across the street for, um, commercial businesses picking up people's garbage, and we're charging somewhere around, how much was it?
Two dollars, or you look up for the commercial?
For the commercial.
Two ninety.
Two, two ninety for a punch card that says something like five point two cubic yards or whatever it is. Or, I forget what, how many cubic yards? But it turns out to be somewhere around four tons of garbage, and if you go down to Rutland, you're paying a hundred and forty-five dollars a ton. Um, we're one of the only few town, um, places that actually accept, it's right there, so hall right there.
Twenty cubic, for twenty cubic yards.
And if I look up twen, I mean, twenty cubic yards is a lot. I mean, it's a bunch of truckloads.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's, it's more than two tons.
Yes.
So, you know, and I think, I think I had heard a comment from a, 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 an assistant town clerk that said she doesn't remember ever selling one of them. And I think that would back up, I don't go to that, I go down to Rutland.
Right.
I've always went to my, back of my own building, now I'm going, you know, whatever. But I've heard some people come to me, and they say, I see commercial trucks going in there, and no one comes out, and no one punches a card. I don't know if they have a card. So, we, we are allowing it, but I would re, I would rethink that cost.
What I can do is, I can find out, um, from municipal solid waste, I can talk to, uh, to Casella and say, what is the average weight of what they're getting in a twenty cubic yard dumpster? From municipal solid waste, and then they can tell me, and then we can say, well, what is that value? And say, what is the actual cost of it?
Right. You can get, like, five tons in a thirty-yard dumpster.
Oh, it depends on what you're putting in, like, if you're putting construction debris, but this is municipal solid waste, so it would be lighter than that. So I would just, I would ask them, because I'm sure they do twenty-yard removals at places that are municipal solid waste, and then I can, I can determine what that, we'll try to come up with some comparison.
Casella goes in there with whatever. I mean, my biggest thing is, is, you know, who has the card and who's punching it?
Right.
But we should be in that hundred and forty, hundred and forty-five dollar a ton. I know we don't have a scale or whatever, but we should break it out.
Well, we'll try, I'll come up with an average, and we'll look at that number. But we did increase the, the fees, we're going to get about, we assume we're going to get about a thousand dollars more, but I wouldn't even increase that until we see how this applies.
Okay. We're supposed to be here for residential.
That's correct.
We're stepping above by saying commercial.
Correct.
It's charged accordingly.
Yep.
That's really, I mean, we're not going to vote on it, we're going to still look at it or whatever, we're going to wait for...
Well, no, and once I have some information, then we can decide to change the rate schedule, and we'll, we can review the whole thing. We did do a review of, uh, stickers and general per-bag costs, and we're right about in the middle at this point for the, for the residences.
Some people don't have their stickers.
Well, actually, but I will say that they have been coming in a lot more recently than, and getting stickers, and they're in on the day, like, every Monday we get a bunch of visitors, oh, I need a sticker, and I need a punch card. So it is getting better, so. So that's all I have as far as the budget goes, and I just wanted to make sure, you know, we're all on the same page, and, and I will, I will tighten it up, finalize it, and then we can look at voting possibly on a proposed budget on December seventeenth.
And everybody in here, it's just basically on the, um, the caller is two percent?
Correct.
Across the board?
Across the board, no exceptions.
No exceptions.
Anything that's modified, anything that's modified...
I think is about two percent, one point nine, two percent right now for this year too, I saw that came out, so...
Yep, so I mean, just, I mean, there, if there's any adjustments that are outside of that range, there was a couple that were corrections, like, an example is rec director, and, and other people that we switched from hourly to, and we actually went to what their actual number was, so there is no change in anything other than the two percent, but we are, there are a couple of corrections in the, in the salary line items.
We've already done the proposed tax application, right?
Yep, that's all, that, yeah, it was just all the same discussion.
We're just trying to keep this moving along, so we have the stuff to see, and then Steve can, Steve Finer, Fineran will be here at the next meeting, so...
That was my, yeah, the goal tonight was to say, is there any, anything that's, that is sticking out to you that we want to, that we want to take a, another look at before we get to a, a final draft? But I think we're, we're right in line, and, and just for giggles, I did the, what the ads were, you know, twenty-five thousand of it were things that were off, twenty-five thousand above the one percent, because the one percent is the normal increase between salaries and things like that. Um, but the twenty-five thousand was for the rec director and the police. Um, twenty-two thousand was the addition of the public safety building operations piece. Twenty thousand was the additional line striping that's going to come out. And then there was some garage supplies, but salt and sand prices went up a little bit. And those were the only things that were outside the normal, regular increase. And we did separate a line item in the recreation department for four thousand dollars for, for advertising, because we weren't, we weren't, we had no place, it wasn't being identified, or, or, and we kept going over budget. So we were spending the money anyway, we just had no place for it. So those are the only real changes.
So now, since we're moving into another year, this is really July, and we've been talking about what I'm going to say next for about three or four years, and he just walked in, or whatever, Whit. Um, when are we going to see, because most towns, when there's special events in towns, and our police department has to spend time on those events, in most other towns, there is a fee charged for that, and they must contact or whatever. So I think we've asked something to come forward to us?
Well, Whit has provided me a, um, a sample, uh, special events, uh, signup issue, and we just have to get to a point where we create a policy that goes with it, and I think once we get through this process with the, the board, we can probably do that early in the year, so that we get that in place. Um, so we can then have, we can have fees, because we also have the issue, there used to be, there was a time when there were some fees charged and not charged for use of town facilities, like, if somebody was having an event here, um, that they wanted to hold it on the town, where there was some small charge, and they had to have insurance requirements, we just want to get all those things cleaned up.
But I mean, we, we brought in a police department, and the police department was supposed to be really for patrolling the neighborhoods and everything else. Um, and, you know, some of these events are holding up, uh, holding up, holding up our police department. A bunch of hours.
Well, the, the advantage to that is then they could do...
The skateboard thing down, you guys are up there on East Mountain Road for what, three days? And, and, and you're there, and really, there's, I mean, it would be like saying, we're going to put the fire department somewhere else instead of being here ready for. If it's going to be there, then we have to be reimbursed for it, and then have another officer on doing what they're supposed to be doing in the town.
Well, and that, and what that really ultimately means is, is that for the event, it's overtime chart, it's overtime rates, because in order for us to get the regular coverage for the forty hours, that's going to have to be over and above, so we would have to use the overtime rate to do that calculation.
Okay, so that's what I would like to see sometime when we're done with all this, so we can get it going.
Very good.
Number eight, managers' report?
Uh, listers' corrections, we have modified, set a listers' corrections. First of all, the, the one item, uh, Amazing Homes was your move to this, because we do have the ability to file, to place an actual lien to, to do that, so that one has been addressed. Um, the other two, Santa Fe Steakhouse and Red Clover Tattoo, both are no longer in business, we do not have the ability, um, to, to apply liens. Um, so the couple of questions were, what has happened with the personal property on those, the, the site that replaced where Santa Fe was? The, the in part has already been changed and moved to the new owner and is being charged, and since the restaurant hasn't opened, that hasn't started yet, but it will start as of April first, um, with the, having the personal property taxes to go for that. Um, but in order to write this off, basically, the one for Santa Fe Steakhouse is seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and fifteen cents is the total due that we would actually be, um, correcting. And for Red Clover Tattoo, that one hasn't been in business for quite some time, and the total write-off of that is a hundred and eleven dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the listers' corrections for Santa Fe and Red Clover Tattoo. I mean, this is just something that we should be at the top of, because, you know, the sale went through, and it should have been there.
That's correct. And what it may, what it, what it amounts to is, is we're going through, and we're going to have, because the one thing that's different with this than a property tax lien is you actually have to physically file a lien, you can't, where the, the property tax lien is...
It's a separate bill.
It's a separate bill, it's a separate lien, where the actual property tax, you don't actually file a lien, because it's an automatic lien by state statute.
And, and when I brought this up at the last meeting, it was because, you know, here I am, I was, I have a personal property tax bill, and now that a college took over, it's no longer mine or whatever, but we are paying the personal property tax this year.
Right.
Okay, and then I've been told, because I found out, we don't charge for schools, personal property tax. But even though it's a school this year, the tax bill was already sent out in, or is as of April first.
Whatever it is, as of April first.
My contract didn't start until July, so...
Right.
You know, they're paying the, the personal property tax, so, so that's all. How much was on the, uh, the Amazing Homes?
Like, two couple hundred dollars.
So what is actually considered personal property?
It's basically, if you operate a business, and let's say you have a restaurant, it's all your kitchen equipment, it's all the things that are not part of the actual, that aren't really...
Hotel, it's your beds, lamps, TVs.
Right, it's any of the stuff you can pick up and leave with.
It's a certain percentage, and then you could depreciate it every year by whatever.
Right.
Depreciation. I mean, the big, the big one is, is that we get somewhere around a hundred and forty thousand dollars from that?
Actually more than that.
Now we do?
Yeah.
How much are we getting now?
I forget what the number is, but it's, it's, it's...
The big one, the biggest pair on that is the resort.
Because the resort's paying for lifts and all of those things, they have a, it's a whole setup for that.
So they're, they're all their snowma, all their snowmaking equipment, all their, um, snow cats, snowmobiles, all that stuff. Um, and instead of taxing it at the full tax rate with the school tax rate, it's just the municipal tax rate. So, that was my, that's one of my bigger things with this, um, with the, um, short-term rental program. You know, everyone says, oh, I don't want to pay the fee for the application or whatever, but if you're, if you're a business, then you're a business, and then you should be paying personal property tax then.
And, and from the fee perspective, I, I look at anything that we add to our budget in the town to be able to be self-sustaining. And, and if it, it should not cost the entire tax base in order to put that on.
I'm going to say, we're not, we're not a board that's looking to just take any penny out of every single buddy's property, we're trying to make things even here and fair. So if you're in business, and you're renting your places out, you know, it's either going to be a fee, or it's going to be personal property tax, in my mind, and we'll get to that when we have that discussion, when it comes forward from the planning commission to the board, so...
On that, the next item was department updates. Oh, sorry.
Those in favor of accepting the listers' corrections, please say aye.
Aye.
Department updates, I actually don't have anything this time, I just, it's always on the agenda, so I don't have anything special to report, and there is no liquor control tonight.
Okay, other business.
How the lights doing? How are the lights doing?
They, they were up there last week, and they, they're finding a mess with that whole thing, but I'm hoping that they're going to get that the next week or so.
Notice the bunch were on?
Yeah.
All the way up to KMS?
Yeah.
Because that's where they were.
They got a bunch of them on, but there's also, they're actually.
And then all of a sudden, there was like five or six that started down lower.
But they're actually not all on one circuit, the weird thing, I think we might have just had some lights go out.
Okay.
I don't think it's actually the whole wiring problem, we actually, because there is like five or six that are just sporadic.
Yeah, like some jacks up.
Yeah, so we're getting those updated.
Okay. How are the highway guys doing with the snow?
Doing really well, we do set a slightly different policy during a World Cup, we went, we go to basically a bare roads policy, and we make sure everybody can move, so they, it went really well, and we didn't have any issues, no complaints, so I think.
Do we do that at Christmas, and?
We do that on any major holiday weekend type of thing, like usually it's Christmas and.
Friday or Saturday night.
Yeah, when, when, if there's a, if there's an event coming in, we try to make sure that people with less than snow-worthy vehicles and tires can get to where they're going.
Three-year-old summer tires.
Did I say that, did I say that politically correct enough?
That's it for me, probably. Do you guys have anything else that we spoke about, that you have a question about?
Okay, do we have any for executives?
I'd like to go in for contracts and personnel.
Okay.
All right. Motion to go into executive session for contracts and personnel.
701.
Okay.